We'll call the City Council Work Session for Monday, January 29, 2024. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a roll call, Lisa.
Jeff Donkey?
Here.
Tracy Coach. Tracy Coach. Hello, I'm here. Bill Leclerc?
Here.
Darlo Leclerc? Tim Patry?
Here.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Here.
Scott Steckmesser?
Here.
Ben Malauske?
I'm here.
All right, we have adopted a 4A on our agenda tonight, which is a consideration for any council member to join us via remote location. Tonight, we have Tracy and Scott both joining us via phone. So we do need a motion and a vote to accept them into this meeting. Looking for a motion to accept them into this meeting. Bonnie, thank you. Second by Tim. Any counsel discussion? Uh, see none. Can I tell you a rule call?
No.
Okay, what was the rule call?
Tracy Coach?
I don't think she gets the vote.
Nope.
Uh, Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darlo Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Patry?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Donkey?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Welcome to the meeting. Uh, going on to number five, which is a consideration of request from the Two Rivers Family Swim Center regarding the future of the community pool in Two Rivers and possible city operation of a new pool. If needed, capital funds for such a facility can be raised from non-city sources. The recommended action here is going to be council discretion. I don't know that we will necessarily vote. I think we're looking more for presentation with an ability to ask questions to the family swim center. And I mean, of course, we can do a vote. It's our discretion. But I think that's kind of what we're trying to do is trying to gather some information to see what those next steps would be.
Council, do you want it to a committee or to staff? By the way, we are being live streamed and televised as well? Yes, live streamed and channel 993 on Spectrum Cable. Uh, so hopefully we're going out vote paid there. Uh, council has heard in the past from representatives of the Two Rivers Family Swim Center, currently organized as a not-for-profit community organization about the need for capital investment in basically in the pool, in the swim center facility. Uh, there's been some discussion of what role might the city play in this. Uh, the city historically has not had any financial responsibility for either capital or operating expenses for the swim center. Uh, so again, we welcome the team here from Two Rivers Family Swim Center. You know, some of the folks would go and introduce your team. They have a presentation, which you also have in print form on the front. Please.
So I'm Christine Villan.
Stephanie Jaski.
I'm Eva Gates. I'm hearing about.
So we're here tonight, um, to advocate for a public pool that's open to the entire community, um, resident, non-resident, like. Um, and I think most of us can agree that living, um, around multiple bodies of water, that, um, a community pool would provide a safe environment for families, individuals, and children to swim. Not only providing swim lessons and fitness, um, opportunities, but life-saving certifications, emergency training exercises. And it would also be an asset, um, within our community that would encourage young families to move to our community. Um, so back, um, a couple months back, we had women pools update, um, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm. Um, you want to go to the first slide, please? So we had women pools, um, put together, um, of this, uh, of a new, um, quote for a brand new pool. So, um, this pool included demolition of our existing, um, pools. Um, we currently have a lap pool, diving pool, and a kiddie pool. Um, and replacing it with a lap pool and a leisure pool, it would be zero, um, depth entry, um, so ADA compliant. And then also allow for that splash pad piece with a, um, umbrella teardrop, um, which is kind of like a waterfall for kids to play under, um, and a one-meter diving board, and then also a climbing wall. Now, all these activities, um, once provided to approve, uh, council is, uh, committee is formed, we could look at redesigning this, um, any way that committee would, um, seek that.
I could just jump in. Sorry, I was just ran a little later. I don't have the issue with it. Anyway, um, we actually had several different pools. And along with this, it started with the base of the pool. And then you had like a, a climbing wall. Those were all additions. So that's what our board chose for the option. But there's ways to adjust it based on adding or taking away from what we kept.
So this is strictly, um, a pool rendering. It doesn't include, um, remodeling of the locker rooms, the concession stand area, the office area, or the pump room, um, and then the entrance and the green space. If we flip to the next slide, um, new pools had given us an updated quote full of anywhere between, um, 1.8 million and 2.1 million, um, to do with the pool and the pool deck and the things we had mentioned. Now, the additional items would be anywhere, we're guessing, this is very high level, two to 2.2 million. Now, if a committee is formed and you approve and we move forward with this, obviously, we confirm up these numbers and actually have a construction company committing quotas on that price.
Next.
So how would we go about raising the capital for this? Um, we would, with the city's commitment, form a committee, um, Friends of the Aquatic Center, kind of like Manitowoc did, and have, we're asking for a member of the city council and then also the director of Parks and Rec to be part of that committee, um, to help design the pool, to help market the pool, help budget for the pool. And, um, we'd also look at, um, creating a media campaign manager to help, um, hit those companies, um, that we're not thinking of, that aren't already in our campaign plan. Next slide. Um, putting together, um, some operational projects. So basically, that committee would, um, raise the capital to construct the pool. What we're asking of the city, besides, um, providing somebody to help, um, sit on that committee, would be to manage the operations of the pool. Um, we looked back at what it cost us to run the pool, um, over the last several years. And then we also looked at pools like Manitowoc and Plymouth and other pools in the state of Wisconsin to see what their operational budget was. And we put together some numbers. Um, so starting out the first two, three years, it's really going to take a little bit to get it up and running. We're going to have some marketing expenses. We're going to have, um, some unknown expenses, um, as we've moved to the public in the past. And this is brand new construction. It's a different layout of a pool design. Um, so we would ask the city to help with the operations. Um, some assumptions with this is that we are open, um, 65 hours per week, um, 13 weeks out of the year. We would hire a full-time year-round pool manager, who would also be a city employee, um, so there would be other things that they would do throughout the year. Um, this pool manager would be able to certify, it would be a certified lifeguard trainer. Um, we would have 14 staff lifeguards on duty, um, or available employed, I should say. We're looking at 5% revenue growth, um, over the five years. Um, and then also, um, 2% wage increases each year. Now granted, this is very high level. If we were to move forward with this and form a committee, we would have a little bit of inputs from the actual city on how these numbers would play out, like how their concession stand does down at the beach and things like that. So this is just based off of what we've done previously or what our community, surrounding pools have done.
By the way, folks, I handed out a paper copy. I thought it was the updated presentation. If you're, if you're seeing numbers on your paper copy that Jack puts up here, these are the corrected numbers. Apologies.
Okay, can you move to the next slide?
Sure.
Oh.
Hold on a second.
So we're asking the city if they're willing to support a public pool. Um, again, we would be asking for someone to sit on the committee, the Friends of the Aquatic Center. We'd be asking for the director of Parks and Rec to sit on that committee. We'd be asking for your support in planning and marketing, um, of this pool through the capital campaign. And then we'd be asking for you to operate the pool.
The, if I can, the projected revenue expenditures, that that's what you guys are projecting for this facility or that's what you've gotten from other facilities?
So that's what we would be projecting for this facility based on what, what we have done as the swim club in the past and what Manitowoc, Plymouth, these other swim clubs have done.
So they're factored into this as well?
Correct. So these numbers are very high level. I mean, once, once the committee is formed, we'll be able to delve down those numbers. We'll really be able to maybe project, hey, you know, we have 200, um, we have 200, um, children in swim lessons. And then we're going to charge six, or $50, um, for swim lessons. This is what I'll, this is the revenue I'll generate.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, as far as the operating costs, you have a breakdown?
We do, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I can share that right, so you can share with me.
I'd really like to see that. And then as far as the capital portion, you just want the city to just be engaged in it?
Correct. We're not asking the city to fund, fund the construction of the pool.
Just the operation?
Yes.
Okay. What, um, that's a lot of money for you guys to raise. What do you have in mind?
So we, we, so years back, we did start, um, a capital campaign.
Yes, we do. We do have one that we had started that I've certainly shared, where we had, where we, you know, businesses that we're looking to target and different, different ways to raise the revenue. We also counted greatly on West Foundation doing a grant, but they pretty much said that without us being involved, that they wouldn't even talk to us. So.
Yeah.
But we do, we do have the groundwork of that later.
Because I know with the West, I mean, they want to, they want to see, whoever's asking for the grant has to get in the game. So there's already got to be money there, but, um, I don't know, because I mean, that's a lot of money to build this. That's a lot of money. And I'm assuming too, that the longer you wait to make a commitment, the price has just been going up, 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 so.
Just like, just like everything else, yes.
Well, and the construction portion of the pool, the pool portion, those are solid numbers because we had just received those at fault. Um, the, as far as remodeling the locker rooms and the concession stand and that area, that would need somebody to come in and actually. We're kind of just kind of wall parking that right now based on other things.
It's actually beyond remodeling. It's actually building. The destruction of building a new one. Uh, one thing that Newman did say was that the size of our equipment room wasn't big enough for the new equipment. Um, the new equipment is going to be more modern, more automated. So it'll actually, you know, save, it'll probably save on some of our other operating costs that we currently are under though. But we would, it would need to be a bigger building. And we decided rather than just doing an addition, because it's an old wooden structure and with showers and pool and moisture, it's, maintenance is a nightmare.
Sure.
So we were looking at something like a cinder block thing, something, you know, larger.
Can I ask?
But we didn't actually want to get close to that.
Right now, as far as what you raised, um, would you be willing to let us know what you've got in the, in the bank for that? The amount towards it?
We never kicked off the capital. We never formally kicked off the capital.
Oh, I thought you guys had some kind of opinion.
We have lifeguard groundwork laid. We have a plan, but we.
We were, we were ready to launch when COVID hit. And it just like.
Oh, okay.
You know, it, like everything else, it pretty much stopped everything, so.
Okay, because I mean, as far as, so you would need to get grants, probably sponsorships, um, community involvement. I do, do you plan on having like events where community can? Because that's, that's a lot of money, you guys.
Well, and. And we've thought, talked about bringing on a campaign manager to tap into those resources that we're not thinking of.
And, and we, we have talked in the past, but I forget her name. But, but she was kind of helped us out a little bit in, in like on the plan. I know what you mean. She was, she works with not-for-profit consulting. She's, she's, she's kind of a lead person in the Friends of the Aquatic Center. Amy. Yes. We did a prior meetings talk about those questions about the availability of grants on this, how much excess was, um, working with the group. You know, we haven't done an exhaustive search, but in between recessions and the federal government throwing gobs of money out for things like Beaver Dam connected on their senior center fort, probably DNR stewardship program, which does have some money for park development, is the only one right away that Mike Knapp is our Parks and Crime Director and I came up with. We've tapped that in the past for as much as 300,000. I just, it's speculative, but if we're successful, I don't think it would exceed half a million, which is a lot of money. But couldn't guarantee it. And sometimes you're in a, like, two-year funding cycle for that. Just one thing I wanted to point out, not belabor it. Uh, you know, the city council would have the, does have the ability to, not what they're asking for today, but tomorrow money, that doesn't require voter approval for pri, community projects. However, you have to show a public benefit. So either it's a public pool or you're guaranteed open swim time for the public. In the case of operations, something we need to keep in mind, we brought it up before. That's why I had this, okay, you had the, this Department of Revenue sheet on levy. Because what the city raises each year in property taxes for operations, and that's library plus general fund. Year over year, that can't go up any more than the percentage of net new construction in the community. Our equalized value is probably about 650 million dollars right now. So a 1% lift would be 65 million dollars worth of new construction. We don't see 1% lift. So, um, I think hand in hand with what is proposed by the swim center folks, which would be the city, I'm assuming from tax dollars, you know, making the budget balance would probably point to a citywide referendum on levy ones. And you can do that as this shows either as a one-time voter approval. Probably wouldn't want that. That's not reassuring if you got a new three or four million dollar facility. You can do it for a finite number of multiple years, the next three, the next five. That's a little better, but you might still be dependent on getting it successfully renewed. Or you can ask the voters for approval to levy up to an additional X amount of dollars ongoing. Only problem there is, I don't know, first of all, it says what inflation is going to be, how it's going to affect you, but, but this is something we have to discuss early on. Because if the council were going to consider this or agree to it in concept, you'd, I think you'd almost want the voters' approval for that upfront. It'd be a heck of a boost to a capital campaign if the voters said, yeah, raise our taxes by hecka number, 70,000 dollars, say at max, to support the swim center. Um, but given the laws, our legislature and governor at some point in time have put in place, those are the constraints we operate under. And I know you're very much aware of this, council. The, the, the other thing that I'll just add to that, Greg, is we, we did also talk that once, once we wrote, raised the money for the capital campaign, build it, we would continue to raise funds that we could help try to offset some of the operating costs. So at some point after, if, you know what I mean, we, we would be available for not just that, but also improvements and et cetera. Kind of like what Manitowoc does, that they continue to still raise money even though of large expenses. Yeah, for the library would be a good model. Comes from the library, it's a lot of great private fundraising. I just wanted to throw that out there that eventually that's going to, there'll be support from us.
Yeah.
So as, as we talk about levy, let's keep in mind that, uh, net new construction does not include what is built from TIF districts or TIF funding.
Right.
So even though we have new construction going up within the industrial park and possibly other parts of the area, that does not get captured when it has TIF while with just an FYI.
So not to get too bureaucratic, but that's a very real constraint on purpose. Yeah. Um, no, you said in part of the operating costs, that, uh, city employee would be their pool manager.
Yeah, so we, when we met with, um, Bernie Mike, we talked about what, that's the pool manager would actually be most likely a city employee. So in the off-season, they'd be doing things for the city. But all of their salary is right now in the pool.
Okay. And also, I, if I'm not mistaken, there are very, very, very few pools in the state that are, that are completely standalone, right? Most of them have.
Most of them have tax revenue.
City money coming into them. Yes, because I know they're very.
Plymouth and Manitowoc for sure, so.
And we, we look at, at several different ones. We try to look at ones with populations of rather than our size. And there, there are actually surprisingly, there's a lot of community pools. Okay. We should also clarify that just mentioned, all the employees are city, it would be city employees in this context.
Yeah.
They would all be a part, part of the park's direct department and report and be a part of the city.
Yes.
So operation, the, the, they, the, the community, the, the pool that becomes a friends group, right, is a support entity for fundraising. So it is, it really would become a 100% city entity to run.
That is correct.
Is the operation.
That is 100% open to the public and not a private pool.
Right.
Uh, with that said, uh, would you guys be willing to relocate the pool?
Yeah, it's got to, this one has to be done anyhow, so.
Yeah, this is yours.
See, the only, the only thing I'll add to that is the cost of the pool is going to go up, um, because they're planning on using the footprint. Basically, the holes in the ground now, other than digging a little bit between the, the diving pool, this will be pool. So there would be obviously difference in, in cost for that.
Well, it's already plumbed for that too, right? I mean, you use the existing.
Supplies.
Yeah, the existing supplies. I mean, you already got the, like, the hookups and everything. That is.
I mean, it's.
That would all need to be updated.
Yes.
Right, but I mean, but it's there.
My understanding is it's a complete re.
It's a complete renovation.
Of everything, yeah. We had a long conversation about whether, uh, early.
We had a long conversation about whether, uh, early on, whether or not this, the pool in its current state can get back upper money without a full multimillion dollar capital campaign, and I was assured to me by the pool team that that's not possible, right, under current laws and all that stuff.
When, when, when we met with Newland Pools originally, we're grandfathered in because we're so old, so we're not up to current code, and you can do certain amount of work, but once you do major plumbing issue, you know, plumbing rework, which we would have to do, then you need to bring it up to code, and they, they basically said you'd be, it would cost way more to try to bring it up to code than it would be to just start over, basically. Cause none of our equipment is gonna be up to code, we're not eighty-eight handicap accessible, so we would need to be to add a wheelchair lift or some type of zero level entry to it, there's several different things that we would need to do over, and it just, it wouldn't be, they, they admitted to us, it wouldn't be cost effective to do it that way. So.
Jeff, another good point you brought up, Bill, because I know there were, there were conversations already about relocating in it, because the city is in the north side part, and that wouldn't be an ideal place for it, should it go that route?
Yeah.
You know, there's just gotta be a trade-off in that, or something.
How much property is there right now?
I don't know what the actual, um, it's, I thought I heard. It's, it's a pretty, is a pretty good size, because we own that, that field all the way back.
Climate-wise, in terms of, you might still want to tend to the north end.
Right.
It is warmer there.
Right.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I just drove it.
But yeah.
You got a pool and, you know, yeah. Although because it, well, we would still have to determine what to do with.
Right.
We still have to have some demolition for that site, we, we can't just walk away from it.
City just retained some land northwest of the middle school and, uh, there's an awful lot, and dare I say it, undeveloped near the cemetery. There are other, there are the north end locations that could potentially.
Yeah. I, I am a proponent of the pool, I agree with you, um, I have another question, though. When you factored in these numbers with the operational costs, does that include the hours that you guys had for volunteers to open the pool and close the pool? Did you factor that into these numbers, or are those not factors?
So, so they are, they are factored in, um, I did take out like your groundskeeper and your janitorial and things like that, because, I, I mean, right now, we're having lifeguards function at, as, and volunteers do the groundskeeping, but I swamped it because it's onsite, we talked about eventually putting maybe a billion there or something like that, that that would be maintained by the city in a different budget. But, um, we did, I did take into consideration multiple, um, lifeguards and assistant manager, and then also the pool manager. So yes, there was people there to help open that pool and close it with extra week in there.
So you had like an extra week of salary to open and close?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
They didn't include groundskeeping, but that pool's very close to the cemetery, the cemetery recruit is the vast majority of Boeing across the city. That cemetery recruit could make very easy work of that property in terms of groundskeeping. So your, your numbers for, uh, that we have up here, that includes all the lifeguards and the manager and?
Yes, yes, and the only thing it does not include is the tax revenue, because I wanted to just see that, said that the tax revenue would have to be included, so.
So, and Greg, you, you said that the only way for us to really even think about it would be to have the referendum by the public to say that.
That's my take on it, I mean, the, the, you know, this year was easy because we had the one-time lift and share of revenues that helped us on the budget. But in a typical year, to fund a sixty to seventy thousand dollar lift out of property taxes alone isn't happening, it just isn't happening. Unless you, you know, unless you make cuts somewhere else to make it happen. I think.
Right now, you guys open when? When is your opening day?
We usually open the Saturday after school gets out, so.
So it's in June?
It's June, early June, and when we are open through.
And when is it?
Typically.
So it's pretty short season.
Which Manitawak actually closes, and I think you always do it as tapping shorter days, I think.
There is a shorter.
The days mid-on, yes.
Yeah.
But once, 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 when school is open, there's nothing to, we, you know, you might get someone on the weekend, but we just felt there wasn't work. Cause you can't just turn the pumps on for the two days you're open, you have to keep circulating the water and, and adding the chemicals and doing all of that like you wouldn't if you're not open. So we just decided it, it wasn't effective to do it that way, because the majority of what we get is kids, you know.
I mean, even if the beach dies down, once you get to September, especially if you got Sunday football on and the Packers are on, or you get sad, there's no one coming out on Sunday for sure.
But that's not to say we couldn't leave it open for the month of September and just run it on weekends and have school lessons at night or something, so.
Mm-hmm. You would just still need it, like I said, if the puddle would need to be running, you can't turn the pumps off, and you're still gonna have chemicals, and the only thing you wouldn't have is you wouldn't have staff, but everything else would still be, would still be running electricity, water, all of that.
Piggybacking, and that's where you can continue to make revenue, and as we get, we're acquired in this, um, we talked about it, senior, uh, maybe the month of September, having senior water aerobics, um, so there's a lot of avenues that we could take.
Mm-hmm.
If we, I mean, to have.
And, and there probably still would be some, we, we get a lot of lap swimmers, uh, some of the lot of night, literally, people come during the noon last swim time, and I'm sure if they were still open, they would still come, so it's not like there would be nobody there at the pool, there would be opportunity to have maybe a short win or a deep open, which would be for the month of September as well.
Any other questions for the group members here?
Um, that's where, you know, the last time you presented, um, I've seen most of the council, council got two pieces of, well, two letters that people were not in favor of the pool. I mean, I'm not saying the whole city is that way, and we did get that, and I'm even, I, I'm not quite understanding, you want the project manager to be a city employee?
Well, it would be a city employee, because this would be city operated.
The, the pitch is, these folks take the lead on capital fundraising and basically say, city, here's a pool, paid for, but ongoing operating responsibility is the cities, the, the taxpayers, understanding there'd be a good portion of the budget we expect, they expect, and the projections show offset by revenues. But bottom line, it would become a city operation, that's the pitch.
Can I just, can I just ask, well, why were they not in favor of what, what was in their letters?
Well, I, um, this was a while back, one person didn't, didn't like the presentation. I think it's because it wasn't very clear, and even now, I, I'm not sure how clear even I'm understanding it, because, um, I guess I would like to know how much is this employee, is it a new employee, are we gonna be paying insurance for them? And our retirement thing, you know, I mean, it is expensive thing.
I think to make it as clear as we can, this is going to be the city's, this is going to be yours. We are stepping in and saying, we're gonna help, we're gonna help you guys and raise as much funds as we can. So this is going to become a city entity.
So you're only there for the funds, not for running it.
Correct.
So all the rules are according to the sin.
Correct, so if you want to move the pool, if you want to change the design, this is the city's.
I.
This is the city's.
Yeah.
Very similar to what we did with South Park.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess.
And it would be completely open to the public, no more private pool, it's open to everybody.
You know, something like that, I would prefer here, um, I actually think it would give people here, um, especially since this, a lot of retirees coming here.
And then if that's the avenue you wanna take, then.
Then, 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 then that would be an indoor pool, which is right.
Yeah.
Then what?
Yeah, definitely. You should change this a little.
Yeah, that's.
The capital cost, I don't know how much higher, but I doubt it would be a lot.
Well, I think yes, definitely.
Yep, but you're, it's a short season around here.
The revenue side. The revenue side should improve though, too, if you open the year round rather than just three months up.
And then the other thing that I, that Manitawak has a problem with, they have season tickets, but they have a limit in capacity in the pool, and if you're a season ticket holder, you don't get there early, you don't get to come in.
Which they are doing away with season.
Well, I'm just saying.
But yeah, Manitawak is not continuing it anymore with season passes.
I, I just wanna see as many problems, I don't know, I don't even, I mean, it's a nice idea, but I, I just don't know if even I would vote for it. I'm not saying, it's not because I'm against it, it just seems like the timing and everything is, you know.
See, and that's where we're asking for your backing to move forward, to formulate a committee, to do the research, to get the information to take to the,
The research, the research.
Take to the taxpayers. You know, you know, we can't, we can't, we're, our hands are tied, like, we can't move forward without the city's commitment. You know, and some of these things will be either, you know, once the committee is formed, like how much we charge, are we selling season passes, are we not selling, are we just date passes? Um, you know, what are we offering? Will it be, will it be an indoor pool or an outdoor pool? Like, how much is the way the cost to construct this? All those things will come together once we formulate a committee, and then we take all that to the taxpayer and ask them for their approval. But we can't, I mean, like I said, our hands are tied even without being, having back to the city council.
And just for reference, how many kids do we teach this year? Two hundred kids?
For me?
There's a waiting list for swim lessons, how many, what's your waiting list?
I don't know.
I mean, so I think, I mean, I know that's what I'm a big advocate for, I think a lot of us here are for, is we want a pool to teach these kids safety, and maybe a year-round pool is our answer, I mean, but that's where the city needs to come in and say, okay, we're gonna do this, you know, so.
And help us design it, and help us plan it, and put some actual figures together.
Um, before we go any further, we should probably go to Scott or Tracy, just to make sure that they didn't have anything that they wanted to comment on that maybe hasn't been commented on as of yet, or, yes, so Tracy or Scott, do you have anything you'd like to add? Let's start with Tracy, Tracy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, if I understand this correctly, um, this is, this is gonna be owned, a pool that will be owned and operated by the city.
Correct.
Regardless of where the, the capital money's come from.
Correct.
Um, and just a quick glance at, at one slide, it, you know, it's got operating costs currently, it looks like it's gonna be between, you know, they're gonna be in the whole sixty to seventy grand per year, it's, I don't, I don't know, I think, um, I think this is something that, has the, has, um, has the advisory record, um, discussed it?
No, we have not discussed it at length, we have had on our survey that just got done, um, about our open space plan, there was a lot of comments um, in regards, and all of them were in favor of the pool, and I know there were many at a count of twenty-six percent. How much?
Twenty-six percent.
Twenty-six percent, I think one of those were even higher than that, it seemed like everyone mentioned the pool on the last.
I think there was a hundred unique instances of mention of the pool in that survey of support, I think there was one.
And that was a write-in, right? Like it was rolling, they want a group, it wasn't an option?
They were all write-ins, correct. Correct.
It was not an option, it was a question choice in the survey, they had unique write-ins of at least one hundred unique write-ins on that sur- survey, uh, they didn't support the pool.
How many took that survey again, Mike?
Three hundred and thirty or forty, yeah.
So we're gonna say about a third, thirty numbers.
And that's just write-ins, so they didn't have a choice to say no, yes, or no.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, so they get to what they would.
But as far as advisory record, no, we haven't taken this too far, because there's, there's no real council direction, and we're more of an advisory role to, to whatever council asks for, so to answer your question, no.
It just.
Okay, I, I agree that I have to, perhaps that's the committee that should be looking at this, and then inviting the rest of the city council.
I mean, we can, but it's gonna come down to funds, we're gonna have to put it on a ballot to exceed our levy limits, is what it's gonna come down to, and that's gonna have to come from council authorization. Uh, advisory record can certainly take it up, but it can only take it so far.
Or to take a page from what Jeff said, if I might, it could be a new special committee drawing from the advisory record, the Swim Center organization, and other people out in the community that may have an interest in it. Why does Mark Schweitzer come to mind? Sorry for invoking your name, but former councilman, former of the Swim Center, but.
I, I, I kind of figured eventually that's, it would end up in that meeting somehow.
Yeah, you know, what is, what is the right design, what are the alternatives?
Might be that, right.
I know when Mike and I met, perhaps of the group here, part of it might be, I know there's not a budget right now, but spending a few thousand dollars with somebody who's a really good consultant on planning, these vendors are great, but vendors wanna study something. And, uh, you know, architecture, not your shilling for them, but they did a great job for us on Center Park West. But it's, it's a matter of looking at both capital and operating costs, I'm, I'm not discounting this, but that should be scrutinized heavy. It would automatically mean our Parks and Rec Director would be a major in-kind donation from the city, because this is, this is gonna be a big time concern. But if the community wants it, we, that's our job as the city to be responsive, if the community says they want it.
Tracy, did you have anything else to that? Did we lose you, Tracy?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did, did, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, you know, I know, you, you, you were talking about, uh, sort of like our, um, Central Park three sixty five committee and, and Ed Hocken, you know, and that, that's a possibility, I, um, I might be concerned, it would be long-term, it would be liability, but, you know, that risk management's always my concern.
And that's something the group would look at, I would just chime in and say in Wisconsin, we're lucky because our state and its laws has provided for pretty significant recreational liability immunity for cities, so unless you do something pretty egregious, which nobody would intend to do, uh, there's pretty good protections there.
Scott, did you have anything else you would like to chime in on in regards to the family swim center pool?
Yes, um, first of all, thank you guys for coming, sorry I couldn't be there tonight, um, I do have a question about the size of it, um, a proposed one, how's it compared to what you currently have?
It's similar in size, but currently we have three separate pools, um, but the new plan has it going into one pool, so that it's only one set of pumps, um, to make it a little bit more cost-effective.
Okay.
It basically, if you look at the, 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 the proposed community pool design, that area in the middle with the little red spot in it, right now, that's, that's, that's a gap, there's no pool there, um, the little square with the green thing on above it is where the diving pool is, and the one with the lanes on is the main swimming pool, so there's also a waiting pool that's off to the side that's not in here, so it's basically gonna be probably about the same size for footage-wise, it's just instead of three separate pools, it's all one.
Okay. Um.
And that was done cost-effective?
Yes.
For equipment? Instead of having three separate pumps?
Yeah, yeah. Hmm.
Any idea how far you guys are from capacity on the current pool size? You're probably well over the capacity in terms of how many kids are attending and families are attending in any given day, are you at this point probably still? And in terms of like what the capacity to be, how many people could you fit in the pool?
And that, I, I, I could do the calculation, that's based on square footage. Is what the, so we've got, right now, we have a separate capacity for each of the three pools, and again, it's based on square footage.
Okay.
So knowing the size of the pool, I could easily calculate the square footage in terms of what that has.
I just, if you're gauging the size of the community, how many people are gonna use it, the size of the pool, that size of the pool seems like there's probably room, I, I guess it's my assumption, I don't, I don't think so, but that could be a community question.
Darling. I think that, yeah, we'd have to go to a referendum and let the citizens decide if they wanna spend money on this, but I'm just wondering, when would we go to referendum? When we see that you guys have raised half the cost to build it? Or, you know, because you don't wanna go to referendum and say, this is what's been happened, then it doesn't? Or what if you guys are, are building and then go to referendum and it doesn't pass?
Like, I think we would have to go to referendum first, because we can't raise half of, say, two point five million, and then go to the citizens and they're like, no, we don't want this, what do we do?
And what are we gonna do with the money?
Two point five million.
Kind of like our, our status quo.
Yeah, so we have to a referendum, referendum prior to raising less.
So if we go to, if we go to the community and say, this, this is the plan, just, this is the plan, this is how much it would cost, and just see what they say from there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know, it just seems to me that they would wanna, they'd probably. I don't know, it just seems to me that they would wanna, they'd probably wanna know what the plans are to raise.
Well, that's what we've kind of had this discussion with Greg and Mike this past week, too, like, we're gonna wanna work together to get some information out to the community. What is this pool gonna look like? And so there's some backwork we have to do, we need, and it's not just us, we have to work together, what does the city want? And then we need to get that information out to the community, so the community can tell us yes or no, is this something we want?
But one other thing that I could just throw off that maybe, uh, maybe, uh, a baby step forward would be, one of the things we did do when we were putting our capital campaign together was we did a sort of a feasibility study, but we did it on Facebook, and we just did it with the membership, but we also did it to the, to the community, where we asked people, would you support a community pool? We asked several questions, and we got responses back. However, it wasn't to the entire city. So if that would be something that I'm just gonna suggest, maybe we could throw something together and put in a utility mailer, and just kind of something to kind of get a feel before a referendum, is there, does it appear to be some support for this before we move forward? If you understand?
Yeah.
Because that's one of the first things you do when you put together a capital campaign, is the feasibility, is, is it feasible? Do you have enough support from, you know?
You know, the council isn't forbidden from doing, from doing that as an advisory referendum. Just got to make this point, you got that slug with additional shared revenue legislation took away your, your ability to put most advisory referenda in front of the voters, but if it involves spending of money, you can still do, uh, what do you think about this? Advisory question. If the community gave the nod, the hack of it is though, when these guys go and do the fundraising, you're still having to go back for an official vote on exceeding the levy limit. There's some, there would be something to be said in first, going to the, if everything looked great, going to the community and saying, if these good, if this organization raises the capital funds, do you authorize an additional levy of up to X dollars ongoing to fund this? That might, I think it might change the perspective of some potential donors, because that question is answered, um, and then it wouldn't be any wasted effort. Now, people can speculate and say, well, you know, it costs four million, and you raised three, are we on the hook? No, that's speculated about the part, too, but, you know, it, it could be very clear, if from non-city sources the money's raised, do you support the levy needed for the city operation? There are limits as to when you can put those, um, votes on the ballot, and even numbered years like this, it's February primary, July, April, spring election, might as well be too late, because it's too close. The summer primary, which I think is in August, Lisa, or the November in general. Odd-numbered years, it has something to do with school elections, and the city attorney's looking that up in the other group, but. So you, you'd also have to think about the timing of that, if you wanna put it in front of the voters. How complete is the plan, or is there some nice pretty pictures and narrative to go with it? But there are those options.
I think the first step has to be to form a committee to get exact drawings of what you want. You don't wanna do a feasibility study without having all your numbers, all your pictures in the room, because you're not really asking the plain Jane citizens. When you're doing a feasibility study, you're asking for the business community, those that have the financial input. And they're gonna wanna know what you're doing, how much it's gonna cost. They're gonna wanna know the ins and the outs, and I don't think we have a clear direction of that. Do we have a rough number? Yes. Do we have a clear design and proposal? Not enough to go into detail for a feasibility study, which you would wanna do prior to, um, you know what, all that done prior to doing a feasibility study. Uh, but you're right, we, I would wanna go to the electors before you start raising the money, so before, so in between doing your capital camp, before you do your capital campaign, but after your feasibility study, is when you wanna kind of go to the voters. So there's, I think, some work probably to be done before you do that. Um, because the community as a whole is gonna wanna also know the feasibility study results, and they're gonna wanna know what that pool design looks like before they say, yeah, this is something I wanna, I want my taxes possibly raised on, or, oh, I don't. We don't wanna give them the perception of what it was before, where it was a membership, and this is what it looked like. We wanna show them what is new, what is to come, what it can be, before we say, hey, we wanna raise taxes here, and, and this is what it's for. That's my thought. So to, to get a, um, some kind of a committee formed, uh, between advisory, rec, council, your committee, um, obviously our rec director who leads us in our advisory report, I think would probably be your next best step. Um, and, and I think that can be done between our city manager, Mike, um, your committee as a whole, can sit down at some point and maybe kind of look at, uh, who we need to be on that committee. Um, and then obviously council will elect whoever we want to, to be a part of that. And then advisory report do the same from, from our standpoint, many days with Adam Flit and Greg and Mike, I think, is the best. From, i- if I was doing this solely, that's the route that, that I would definitely go. Having at least a little bit of experience with doing some of these processes, I, I think that's the best process, my two cents, for what it's worth.
If that's the way ultimately wants to go, you could in fairly short order have a resolution in front of the council.
I think this is important, community, not just, there's gonna be a committee, but here's the, here's the tasks the committee is assigned, and then populate it, and get a little bit of.
Which will also take a little bit of time, because I think both committee, both city and committee should probably get together to see what those tasks are before we lay that up in front of council, ARB, to elect members to give that, that board a run. Uh, I, again, I'm an advocate for the pool, I like the pool. Do I like my taxes higher? No, I don't. But I mean, I don't think anyone is up there raising their hand trying to give us more money. So, uh, but, but I think, uh, I think it's a good product, I think it's something that the city needs. I grew up at swim clubs, I can speak in my behalf, uh, of like unit, not everybody has that same grief, and I get it, so. I think it's something that the voters, vaguely will have to decide, but even if they did vaguely have to decide, that's the one to decide.
Thank you. No, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Any other questions from council to the committee? Nope. Greg, good?
I think not, I guess I'm wondering, not to push too hard, but as, as soon as next week, would it be appropriate just to ask? For, council could actually answer that, but for some council direction to.
Let's get a resolution.
And maybe a couple council members to get together again with the swim club people, and create the framework of a resolution like Adam referred to, but.
Yeah.
At least task, task us as to, with doing that, bring it back to council, and that's just to say officially, there's a plan in committee now.
Let's bring that before us, because we don't have anything in writing.
Yep.
Let, let's do that for next week, Monday.
Yep.
Just get a simple resolution that says, yes, we do wanna put together a committee, and maybe we don't. I'm speaking for me again, I'm not speaking for everybody else. But a resolution that's at least in front of us, and then we can vote on it, and there'll be something pretty simple, it just says, hey, yes, we, we at least wanna form a committee and s- see what happens. That's no guarantee that it's gonna go through, uh, even if the committee says yes, uh, there's no guarantees on exceeding the tax levy or anything else, it's just at least saying, let's, let's do it.
Will you be able to mandate and fix that for over here? I mean, will you be able to run it yet this summer?
No.
Not at all, absolutely not. Alright, because that, well, then it's gonna be done for a summer, because there's no way you can, uh, raise it that much.
Oh, that's raised and built?
Right, that's what I mean.
It's probably down for a couple summers, I would say.
Right. No, no, when the state came this summer, they, there was a few big pick on that we had to fix, and we just can't do it, so.
I asked them a lot about that, when it first, conversed, because I think i- in a perfect world, the pool can stay open and just continue to put traction and participation, but yeah, it was pretty clear that, you know, it just wasn't possible.
Thank you, committee. Good presentation. It's not always easy coming up here, but thank you for your time, thank you. Alright, on to number six, authorization to proceed with security improvements for third floor at City Hall, which is a twenty-twenty-four capital project budgeted at six thousand dollars. The recommended action is motion to authorize proceeding with the planned improvements per the plans presented. Uh, those are with us today, not much, Greg, continue on with that.
Yes, briefly, um, I, I don't like bringing something like this in front of the council, but frankly, some experiences we've had over the last couple of years here on third floor, and the world we live in, kind of point to this. As I mentioned in my memo to the council, the only office areas in City Hall that you can freely enter without initially passing through a secure entry point are the city manager's office, economic development, community development, and the tourism slash city attorney's office. The cluster of offices just off the north end here. Uh, we've looked at options for addressing that area, we're not, kind of not like engineering or finance or customer service, if you visualize those areas. There's an outside door, and there's a pretty expansive work area where the offices flow one into another. Up here, you've got the corridor, you've got the desk at the head there, and then the offices come off of it. So as, as you saw in the rough drawing that was in your packets, what we've come up with, and the original six thousand dollar estimate was basically just for a mostly glass door, just before the hallway widens out where the offices are up there, with two good-sized, let's see, three-foot-wide glass door, two eighteen-inch-wide lights or glass panels on either side. Locked entry at that point, the existing door that goes to the stairwell, of course, on the other side. Uh, the door, the drywall work and a few things like that, gobbled up, six thousand dollars right away. We've come to realize though, because the initial thought was to put some inexpensive numeric locks, like we put on some of the other offices now. However, that's a fire exit up there. You can see, oh, we got one at that end, you know the alarm that goes off there when you open the door?
I do know that.
The other one, if we have to flee here tonight, and you don't wanna take the elevator in the event of fire, is that one. So it would be, it would need to be tied into the alarm system, so it automatically unlock and, and be accessible. So that's where you get up more like ten thousand, frankly, between the City Hall budget and what we budget for maintaining the, the security system is, is where that would come to. This is still a project that would be a few months out. And there's enough resources in the budget, but I also know this is, I wanna be cautious about how this is perceived by the public and on council, so, um, you know, Adam and I talked about it a little late last year, and we both agreed this would be a good thing to bring to the council as a whole, uh, to discuss. Uh, if anybody questions, again, I don't like this, I, but, but on the other hand, I don't wanna be responsible if something would happen, would impact one of our employees. You know, the other day, Lisa was out, Elizabeth was over in her office, I was in my office with the door closed, because I was on the phone with somebody in a conversation. Probably shouldn't have been her, and some really nice gentleman just came pounding on the door, oh, you don't know when you open it. Uh, he, he was nice enough, but it, it's that free for people to wander in. I like that, unless, of course, the person is here with an ill motive. And Chief, if you, if you want, can certainly speak generally to some of the instances that we've had. But I think it is time that we move ahead on this, uh, Lisa or Elizabeth could speak to it as well. I just wanna make sure council's comfortable with it. We did look at the idea, could you somehow put secureable entry points in each of the three offices? Well, for one thing, we flow back and forth all the time, including up to the copy machines in the center. That guy'd be locked out of the office half the time, brother. Um, and, um, yeah, that, it just, and that would also mean some probably more expensive modifications, because each of those three offices has the big sliding patio doors, that work just fine for most purposes. So again, this would be a checkpoint out here, for, for those of you that, uh, like to take the stairs coming or going. If you have key fobs, if both doors are fobbed, you could come and go. For the public, there are members of the public that have reservations about popping on the elevator, even before they hear about how our ele- how our elevator takes you to the basement by surprise, sometimes you've taken that ride, so. Um, then we probably need something like signage at each floor. So during the workday, if you're on the first floor, even while upstairs, using the three offices up there, we'll see the folks at customer service. They'll make sure you have access. Second floor, because you can take stairs to the second floor, probably similarly, go to engineering or go to finance. It's not perfect. On meeting nights, we could just disable and hold that up, so people can float in and out. But we're past due to take some action here. Again, if you have questions about the need for or the advisability of some security, I defer to Mike on that, and he's prepared to speak to it. You've got a pretty basic plan in front of you, and wanted to get your feedback, and it was.
I do, I, I do believe there is need for security up there. I don't like how it's laid out. I would much rather prefer that Lisa's desk gets moved up to the double, uh, door, or the sliding door, I should say, with a window, and that door that is locked, and also be able to lock, um, the community development office as well, so that allows for free access. I would vote yes either way, because I think it needs to be done. I just feel that that way is more presentable to the public. It doesn't feel like you're locked, like, kinda like Greg said. As much as you want it free-for-all, you, you, at the same time, you don't for safety reasons. But, but it'd be nice if it was somewhat of a free-for-all, and you could still go up and you could see Lisa, she doesn't let you in. You know, and you're sitting there pounding or causing all sorts of anything else, she'd be up there in the front instead of that back in the window, and would be able to either let you in to see whomever or not, but.
Something like customer service, after the counter in the front, and then have the door on the side.
Kind of, but hers is still glass, so she would still have the glass window, it'd be a matter of changing up that sliding door to an action door, and just moving her desk up front. I don't know the dimensions of all the, if it even works.
One thing I'd point out, is Lisa covers a lot of ground with the building over the course of the day, she's, she's not dedicated as a full-time reception person there, so I think somebody arriving would have to sound for anybody on the floor to be able to answer. Uh, so that, that would be a limitation. Unlike customer service, where there's always somebody out of the four or more people that are down there. So I, and I still like this central point, that we have had a question as to whether Lisa's workstation would move out to that raised platform, and the copy machines might move off to the side. I'd kind of like to reserve judgment on that, see how it works, because although she might feel differently, there's something about having her within earshot. I'm on the phone quick, Lisa, can you tell me? I don't wanna bellow.
Is there, is there like a voice, is there gonna be like a voice activated? Can you come with the floor or?
We frankly, right now, had thought about a buzz, just a, you know, something that was a tone, a chime, something like that. We could have a map there, so it would just do it, or a motion detector. But the thought was, no, you're here specifically to come to these offices, please, please buzz. If we know, right, if we know a bunch of people are coming for a meeting, then probably do it override. It isn't like we're gonna be hunkered down all the time hiding out within there, but there are times, if, you know, you walk into Elizabeth's office, unless she wants to take off out the second floor, there's not another way out. Uh, Lisa's office, if she's fast enough, she can come through that office. Similarly, the tourism office and where the city attorney is on a part-time basis is one way in, one way out.
How many incidences have we had recently that caused you to think about them?
Let's say four or five in the last two years, including people that have had restraining orders issued in other incidents. And Chief, can you speak to it?
I just went back to about the two thousand and eighteen time period, and just off the top of my head, I was able to think of people and bring them up, and there was at least five different people that have caused some sort of unrelia- incident, where there was a panic alarm or something, where we had removed people, um, and it recited, or some, some sort of circumstance took place. I will also say that there's been growing concern over a number of other people that are contacting several members of City Hall, um, Lisa's office, our office, and others that maybe have sort of cease and desist, a restraining order, something along those lines taking place because of incidents.
We, well, it comes to mind, we, we have at least one phone message that I would play in public, based on the content and what was left. Clearly knowing they were leading a force, that message for a specific employee, I'll leave it at that, but it was up there.
Yeah, I, I'll just, I'll just add to it, I think, you know, I agree, you know, there is a need for it. I know Amanda and others can talk about it, but we have a safety meeting that takes place, uh, once a month, and like Greg said, he was actually the biggest, uh, against, um, some of the, the thought process, and Lisa can talk to that too, but uh, there was growing and growing and growing concern in the last few years, I would say especially post-COVID, uh, where there were incidents where we had to start making changes. One of those was customer service. That one was rather easy, because most of the infrastructure was already in place because of COVID and asking, keeping a barrier, so that just extended. Uh, but then Amanda's office downstairs was one of those concerns, where people were just simply walking in and having access to somebody for a high rate for a variety of reasons, so that door ended up getting closed up. We then had issues on second floor, because if you don't know, we also have our municipal court there. We then had issues on second floor because if you don't know, we also have our municipal court there. And there were issues with people either related or unrelated to the municipal court causing problems with finance and/or engineering. So measures have been taken place in those areas. We already had IT, obviously the police department and others that, that are fobbed and secured. But like Greg said, this is the last area that we have yet to secure and these are the most recent incidents I've been dealt with. The most recent being just a couple of weeks back where we had a staff meeting where individual. For lack of a better word, we had to address that. And ultimately he was escorted off the property and that started Lisa's office continuing out here during the staff meeting interrupting that. And then continued out into the lobby for interrupting more customer service. So just basically a recent backdrop to help with things of continuing. It's an unfortunate state we're in, but we were willing to do that. You know, did have that open door policy and unfortunately people use that, this is what we're at. I, I mean, it's very concerning, we do have to do something to prevent individuals up here.
Anyone else have thoughts, Jeff?
What would you like to see there? You're the one that's coming in more than anybody in the day, how would you really like it designed for you?
I'm okay with this plan and Greg and I found quite a length of different options that we do. Once that secure point is replaced, where I want to be and how I'm going to be able to help the public. That I just stopped standing there, there's just so many different options that we can, but they definitely need something. I have worked for public since I was 16 years old and in the last three years, there's several times I've been scared because I've had to push that pad button. And give them a little office because I'm trying to.
I will say that's a flaw in the system too, is she should be able to have safety and panic button, not be, you know, reactive. You know, we have to be responsive there and not have her already armed with it. And that's just not the case right now. So regardless of what we do, something needs to change. You know, where she can still be safe and get us response, or Elizabeth or anybody.
But they don't see Elizabeth in her office, where they see me and they come right at me and when they're at that angry level, it's hard to, do you know, study them without.
So you know, so I just want to know your feeling about the thought of the design for you, since you're a law president and you're more than anybody.
We go back and forth with me being on their presence whether or not, but I am really his right hand when he's asking questions.
You can never allow she doesn't do anything and you're gonna totally hate me, I'm just retired.
No, this is, this is in front of you because the people that occupy the series are broken bigger.
Okay, so you're okay with that now, just.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we'll take a motion.
Endorse.
Do you want to endorse an asset here?
Yes, I will, I'll make that motion.
Okay, okay, Bill, second by Jeff, council discussion.
Just in case Tracy or?
Oh, I'm, yes, Tracy or Scott, let's start with you. My apologies, I forgot that you have people.
Tracy?
Hello?
I'm very excited, sorry. Yeah, I'm still here, I keep getting the wrong button. Yeah, I, I'm totally in support of this, the only question I had is, that sounded, is that glass gonna be bulletproof?
That's not the plan, no.
Okay, just, just curious.
No.
I probably watch too much television, never mind.
Scott?
Nope, I'm, I'm all for it as well, I think it's, I know it's gonna be, you know, public safety in one way, but I think the safety of the people that sit up there, I think. That's a little more important for me, so no questions, I'm good.
Okay, I'll vote in favor of it, I would like to see it redone another way personally, because I think it would be more friendly. For the, the public to access, but I would not deny the safety of, of the individuals that work up there because I don't like the design. So I, I think it's still, it can, it can work, I just think it could work better, but I, I will still vote in favor of it. And nobody else? Rule bubble?
Belle Lacleur.
Aye.
Darrell Lacleur.
Aye.
Tim Payton.
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelotis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Oki.
Aye.
Tracy Kolsch.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you for that.
Thanks, guys.
Onto our last, only foreclosed session, number seven. Authorization to proceed with ordering a new fire pumper to replace the existing 2006 pumper. As a frontline fire response unit, moves to backup unit status. And retire existing 1995 pumper now serving as the backup unit. Scheduled replacement, ordered out for delivery estimated in 28 months or by mid 2026. Recommended action is a motion to authorize ordering a new Pierce Saber fire pumper. At a cost not to exceed $850,000. As recommended by the fire chief and the fire department vehicle selection committee. With the referral to the finance committee for recommendation on structuring the finance. Chief, this is a, I'm at the podium, I assume he's taken it from you.
Thank you very much. As you can see here packet, I had put my capital improvement, my justification for the engagement. I just want to start out with, it's important to note that this did not come from the way as far as this information. This information was gathered by six individuals, we have a five-person committee which was chosen early this year. It was a project that I inherited from the forward chief, purchased this vehicle. Five individuals on the committee and myself doing all the research and doing our due diligence. What I directed them when they were brought to see me were a couple of different things. Something that met our needs and something that was financially responsible that we could take to the taxpayers that say that we did our due diligence. We're selecting a fire engine that is an essential piece of equipment for the fire department that meets our needs. Basically what I'm saying is not the top model, something that meets our needs and is comparable to what we have. And going down this, basically every question is because the truck is, the truck it's replacing is 30 years old. NFPA standards state to replace a vehicle or take it out of first line status at seven years. This truck has been, was in status for about 15 years and now this can be. Or I should say, our engine that it's replacing has been in service for 30 years, it's been reserved since 2006. So all the trucks that we've had before have been replaced in 30 years, our ladder truck is replaced in 30 years. Our engine that we're looking at replacing now has been 30 years. A lot of questions were asked from the council prior to this. One of the questions was why are we replacing it? And I just told you that because of NFPA standards. Second thing is, out of all the departments that are comparable to us, or smaller or larger, they all operate with the same format that we operate in. Two engines and one ladder truck. The difference between the ladder truck and the engine is this. The engine responds to all fire incidents and that fire responds and has all equipment. And water and the oils and everything for that initial attack on a residential fire. The ladder truck is used for multi-story fires or bigger fires that we go from each way down the count. Looking at this, like I said, we've always had two engines. Not replacing engine eight would leave us with one engine. And our engine, our frontline engine goes out of service quite often. Whether it be for maintenance, whether it be for major issues, like, yes, they have a radiator replaced, it's out of service. So having only one engine would leave us, the city unprotected and the only thing we have left is the ladder truck. When we looked at the quotes for replacing, the highest quote was over a million dollars and we went with the lowest quote. Which you can see on the back page on Alfred Bridge, it was 840. And basically that number, 840, 855, that number. Showing is without putting any money down for prepayments. If we did prepayments, which, which it could be half down, it could be 10% down for a full payment that would decrease significantly. I believe that putting 100% down takes around $80,000 sometimes. Another thing to note that there is equipment, new equipment that has to be purchased with the engine. We did get quotes for around $46,000 to $40,000 to $50,000. But I believe that we can cut that cost down significantly while, while figuring this engine. The bid went to a manufacturer that is local in Wisconsin, here's manufacturing. If purchased, it would take 28 months to receive this, this sentence and during that time would be. In our CIP, that we would be, would be to put that money in the account. Just, I was gonna point something out, Chief, if you were looking at the first page where the bottom of the range of the quotes. That, that low end quoted $889,000 and change, did it include the loose equipment, which was pulled, pulled out later? If council approves this, make no mistake, there'll be loose equipment needed for the new truck, you don't want 30-year-old loose equipment on the new one. But that would have to be dealt with in the context of the cap plan. The thing that has some urgency to it, which none of us like, is the business of ordering the truck. Both because of the lead time and what she's, weren't happy to address and said in his memo about this pending change in engines to. New federal requirements and what that might be cost-wise and in maybe not wanting to have the first generation of a new generation of engines. You don't have customers for it. Probably experienced that when you flipped it by vehicles, you're really gonna be able to cut an edge or something. Yeah, you're correct, when we were contacted in like December, there was told that there's a $5,000 increase. Because of safety measures being added to the engine or mandated by NFPA. The price that's on here is good until February 1st. We were also told that there was 52 units that Pierce was gonna build prior to going to the 2027. Once they go to the 2027 mandate, it's gonna go up almost $80,000. That's 80, it's zero, 80. It is zero, yes. What, what that means, that this is a, it's an investment in public safety, meaning that the patient has, has a voice to me and. So the council members and I support. There was a couple of questions on it, as I addressed on here. One of them was can engine eight be remounted? It can't be remounted due to the safety features and stability items that would be added considering today's, say, 1995 engine. Why not by use, does it pose a new? I've bold pointed, bold pointed a number of different things on here. There's very few options out there. The engines that are out there are late mod, late modeled with very high miles. And when you look at NFPA standards, you have to retire a truck after 150,000 miles. So a lot of the trucks that are out there that are a couple of years old, have 138,000 miles and the wear and tear is too much, so it would just be a band-aid. The length of service would be greatly decreased. We would begin unknown mechanical issues, increased liability. And there's some life safety concern based on the operation of the truck and not the reliability and the training we have to put into as my staff. We alluded to a little bit, why not have one engine and they'll reserve? It's not standard across the United States. It would pose serious life safety concerns, not only to the citizen, but the firefighter as well. It would increase our ISO rating and city insurers, which would increase insurance rates. And would not meet expectations of the public. We would have to rely heavily on mutual aid from city and county, to our departments, to system and city. Just to interject, why would mandatory equipment not help us if we, we'd never want our company leaving the city? We currently have one.
Do we get, does NFPA rate our city for firefighting for our homeowners insurance? Is it, if you buy a truck, will these ratings change so that?
We will be able to sustain them, it's an ISO rating.
It would, it's an ISO rating and it would sustain.
It would sustain.
So if we don't do, our homeowners insurance could possibly go up because, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a, I'd like that it would go up. Insurance service office rating now is a three for our department, lower than that.
Yes, lower than, lower than the, than the.
It's a big capital investment, the way the city historically has timed purchasing trucks and there, there have been delays in the past. We're getting 30 years of these apparatus, so we are right, three, two, three, four years on the heels of a major purchase of the ladder truck. That's the bad news. The bad news too is next year this truck will be 30 years old. The good news is once you do that, probably the next council, now you guys will have a long breather. If those trucks last like they're supposed to. But we are where we are. When we first talked about this year's capital program with the finance committee back in October, November. We showed where the department had requested borrowing at over two years, 375,000 went in, you know, 24, 375 and 25. That's when we thought it was a $750,000 truck. And I had said, push it out, push it out and do it half in 25, half in 26. That's still a possibility. We might want to look at the discounting, but when you do the math, $80,000 is a big number. But it's all, it's less than 10% of the purchase price and spread over 28 years, excuse me, 28 months. It's not even, maybe about a 5% interest rate, but if we're doing a 20-year borrowing, you could be pushing 4%. So it might be worth doing, but it's not, it's not as fantastic as it sounds at first blush with your $80,000. That could be worked out, does any down payment, do you get that dispatch, Chief, what, we got 90 days post-order?
Yes.
Thank you. And like I said, this is an essential piece of equipment, this isn't something that we want. It's something that we need to sustain services. The truck, and I had talked to Jeff at the construction station, we talked a little bit, and you mentioned how engine eight looks so nice. It does, it looks like a very nice truck, it looks like it's still operating fine. But underneath is corroded and there's a number of issues that they found on inspection. It doesn't have the same mandated safety features as mandated by the NFPA correctly. So it's one of those things that's a liability to not, the firefighter, but a liability to the citizens while we're talking this truck. Considering that we've gone five years past the maximum amount of time that NFPA says that you can have the truck in service.
Can we recover some by selling that?
Yeah, of course. Is there any value to that? There, there is some value to it.
Not to cut you off, but we've got to stick to council, sorry.
Yeah, he, he said, I just, I like, I like this question. Sorry about that. There is some value to that, what value? What the? Just for example, what do we get for our really nifty looking old ladder truck? That we just got rid of, like, two, three years ago, to the Boston suburbs. Yeah, I believe $30,000. Yeah. I believe you get $20,000 or $25,000 from our old pumper, which is no longer in service. And by the way, Quincy Mass, which purchased the old ladder truck, already has two frontline ladder trucks. Yeah, they bought it as a mandate for their city, for their growth and, in case you need to have another ladder truck. I can't tell if it's still in service or not. They were gonna keep it in service until they got a new ladder truck in?
I'm just wondering who would be able to sell ours, our old.
There, there is a market for it, I'm not sure how much we're gonna get for it, I'd rather sell it than trade it in.
Oh, they would take, Pierce would take it and trade?
Oh, yeah.
Fine, but that's not part of the deal.
No. It won't be a significant offset for the purchase price. Based on experience. So is this coming to you outside of budget time to ask for authorization on capital purchase? Yep, it has 28 months lead time. There are any number of options at the city's disposal. You know, it's, there's still time to spread borrowing over two years, maybe not keep the down payment, but at least. Provide for it in that manner or just defer it until the year that it's delivered. Typically, we try and finance committee will recall this to not add anymore, not add more than $2 million or so in new tax-supported debt in a year. Because that's usually what we're retiring, so we don't roll the debt by, the tax-supported debt in appreciable amount. But we're also in a different time, not, not picking on the.
But we're also in a different time, not, not picking on the electric utility, but you know, we've had experience with authorizing the purchase of a, of a line truck, not knowing for sure what the final, final purchase price would be with the vendor reserving the right to pass along increases. That's not how we used to operate five years ago, six years ago. Uh, it is now, although in the sense that Chief presented from around this price would be locked in unless the order is placed.
This price would be locked in.
It's a damn high price, but it would be locked in.
And I did put, and when I wrote my justification on here, I did put something in there just for the thing about if we purchased our ladder truck, it was a little bit ladder trucky, that we purchased in that was based on our needs and our demands. And we purchased it for, I don't even know what point two was the price on it. Currently, if you buy that same truck, it's almost two million dollars. That's just the market today and how manufacturers are of fire equipment and mandates by, um, fire protection agencies and safety organizations. It's driven the price of these trucks up significantly. I can remember when we bought engines worth three hundred thousand dollars. See how much they, they've increased in price.
I will say, I'm not real pleased. I mean, we're gonna be, for fourteen years, we are gonna be borrowing the sum of over two million dollars for fire trucks, just fire trucks. Fourteen years and two million dollars of borrowing. Um, we spent a lot on that ladder truck. I might argue a little that I think we did get extra stuff in there. Um, it's not just a straight ladder. It has the, uh, the bucket, whatever you wanna call on the top, and it also has the boom to go down versus not just up like other ladder trucks do. And I think if I'd known this was coming, I think I'd have approached that one a little bit different. And I, I guess it's very frustrating just coming from a budget standpoint, 'cause by the time we get done paying for these fire engines, which will be ten years from now, actually it'll be later than ten years from now, because we're not gonna borrow it all at one time, we actually will be borrowing again for the la, next unit, which is, I believe, in two thousand six, so that would put us in two thousand thirty-six.
Yeah.
So, we will not even be probably done borrowing or paying this off, or we might just be at the tail end of paying this off. We will be coming back again for yet another borrow, depending if we borrow half before, like we did with the fire or the ladder truck. Or if we borrow it like we did now, we can end up with maybe a year off, because we'd be borrowing half probably this year, half next year, which puts the end date on that at twenty twenty-five, with the next truck replacement in twenty thirty-six.
It would be pretty close. Uh, there is a correction on that paper. It would be, um, the truck's service at, the two thousand six would be in service for twelve years and then we can maybe thirty years more. So, yeah, it would.
Twenty thirty-six, right?
Yeah, you'd be a detail, you are correct about that.
So, we're just not gonna get out of the debt of fire trucks and that's, they're, they're a big cost. And again, and we got ladder truck was a big cost, but I didn't anticipate coming back so soon trying to buy another truck. So, I will share that I'm a little frustrated with that.
And that's some, that's something when I got into my position, I think a lot of council members, uh, if they recall, I've been talking to a lot of them about this engine coming up. I know the, the judgment they, that they used to buy them and I can't speak up why they did it in nineteen ninety-two. Nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-two buying the two pieces at that time together, but I assume they were in the same situation.
Sorry, I'm happy to say that was even before my time. But, uh, basically you've got three major pieces of equipment with thirty-year useful, thirty-year, which is pretty dang good useful like to get out of them. So, even if you do it perfectly and do ten-year financing, they're gonna be, it'd be better if they were, oh, just paid for that and tried to buy a new one. This is the price we pay for what looked like a different purchasing decision.
Yeah, I wish I was coming up here and asking for three hundred thousand dollars. Like I said before, I believe we use our due diligence.
I don't believe we are up here today, though, asking necessarily for a budget amendment, because we don't have a dollar amount to amend. Therefore, we're asking to be willing to purchase up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a budget amendment to come later after personnel and finance discuss what we wanna borrow this year versus next year.
There may be no help late this year requiring amendment to this year's budget, but we are asking you to make a purchase amendment, signing on the dotted, authorizing, signing on the dotted line.
There may be nothing this year?
There may be, no, but sure.
Depending if we've been down payment.
Right, right.
And we got eighty thousand dollar down payment, it's twenty-eight months to be cut.
It's twenty-eight months, just.
I'm thinking we don't need to be working from zero to the whole time.
So, all we need to do is sign on the dotted line. They don't need any, anything down. Uh, this, like, this year at all? Twenty twenty-four, they're not asking for anything. I'm just, I just wanna be clear, they're not asking. We can do it if we'd like to, but they're not asking. We can, we can just sign a contract that says, yes, in twenty-eight months we'll have that and we don't need payment till at least twenty twenty-five? Any kind of down payment? I'm just making sure that that is.
That's what I'm under that assumption, yes.
Anyone else have any questions for Chief before we get to council discussion with a, a motion? No? Then I would entertain a.
The folks on the phone.
Oh, yes. Do you have anything for Chief specifically? Scott or Tracy?
Nothing for me.
I do not have a question for the Chief item, but I may have a comment after motion.
Okay. We are looking for a motion. Thank you, Jeff, seconded by, uh, Bill, lost your name for a second. Yeah, first by Jeff, seconded by Bill. Council discussion, seeing we neglect the phone a lot, let's, uh, go to the phone. Uh, Tracy, we'll start with you, women first, ladies first.
Um, I'd be more than happy to support this, but I, I would expect in turn for authorization that, that we're gonna be working on not only the best deal, but the best way to finance this, since we, since we did just spend a lot of money on several things. So, um, I know the capital equipment is required. I understand about agency dictates. Yeah, but if we can get the, um, order in before a mandate by, by the federal government that will increase the cost, I'm always for that, because I'm assuming we can grandfather in then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Scott, anything from you?
Uh, no, just same thing Casey said. Um, I support the equipment. I understand that we need it to replace what we currently have. Um, it just sucks that it costs that much, but I will trust our finance team to figure out the best way to pay for this going forward.
Anyone here at the table? Jeff?
I hate to blow up spending that kind of money, but it sucks that past council pushed the cannon so hard on the road that, you know, I really kinda got lapped up. It'd be nice if all three engines could have had it split up. You don't have to foresee any more major purchases in the next few years?
There'd be ambulances. Ambulance would be the only thing.
And when would you project that to be?
The ambulance is coming up, I believe, in two years.
And round numbers in current dollars, Chief? Ambulances, 'cause that's a complete replacement, not a B chassis like we're doing this year. Two fifty to three hundred?
Yeah, we're looking at around three hundred dollars.
Yeah, but the ambulance is getting a lot, a lot of miles on it.
Yes.
Those go through a lot of wear and tear, right? Though, those are, at least in my spot, I, I, and it's easier to pass an ambulance, because we know how much they're used.
And there is pretty significant rubbing on that.
Right, and there, there is a redling back, I think with transportation.
Someone's like, my news.
He said, yeah.
Well, you know, I, it's, it helps with the homeowner's insurance, having our ratings stay higher and that's how it affects everybody in town, basically. So, it's, that's important.
Somebody else? Seeing none, oh, Lisa.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Patri.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimaloudis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dolke.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
I understand, we're, we're working to get a personnel and finance committee getting scheduled to deal with our already authorized twenty twenty-four borrowing capital private. So, this, the financing of this issue, we'll just get preliminary addressing when we get together for that.
For that, whatever, we'll just test for five now. All right, I do need to think that we all three are.
Yeah, Wednesday didn't work out, so I'm actually, I'm waiting to go back from beer. Thursday, where Bonnie, I have to meet you gentlemen.
I'll be fine.
Thursday, okay. If Barrett can make it, we got a date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto number eight, which is closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter a closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight-five-one E. When deliberately or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reason, require a closed session. Tonight, we have two things. We will discuss matters pertaining to chain charges for water and sewer connections for the Vandabro Arboretum at three eight hundred Lincoln Drive and for Wisconsin statute nineteen dot nine-five-one C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Tonight, we will consider waiver of personnel policy provision as it pertains to a specific employee's situation. We will more than likely reconvene to open session to take action on one or both of these items. I'll take a motion to go and go into closed session. And once we do, please stay here, because we do have to vote over those in before we do any further. Looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Tim, seconded by Bonnie. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote, Lisa.
Tim Patri.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimaloudis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dolke.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Okay, we gotta do this one more time, because our city ordinance said so. Uh, eight A, consideration of any council member wishing to join us via a remote location for closed session. Tonight, again, we have Tracy and Scott that are looking to join us via phone, looking for a motion to accept them into our closed session. Thank you, Bonnie, seconded by Tim, council discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote, Lisa.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dolke.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
She has to get the vote.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Patri.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimaloudis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, Scott and Tracy. We will get to closed session as soon as we get Greg back here to discuss these matters and the city agenda. Yep, we're done.